Good evening to everyone, welcome. We're starting our meeting, called to order. And the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And we do have a revised, a revision, and you, most people have the revised version already. And that was the addition that was put on of a very nice donation. And so we've added that into, as you can see. And that would be item six under the action items. And if I could have a motion just to first of all, okay that, and then we'll see if anybody has any other suggestions for, for the changing of the agenda. Yes?
To approve the addition of the action item number...
Saks donation.
Oh, it's just the Saks donation, okay.
The Saks donation. And a second on that? Thank you, Scott. All those in favor of that change? That's terrific. And that's unanimous with everybody here. Now I'll ask if there's, anyone has any other agenda items that they want to add? Or change? Seeing no other hands, I'll assume that that means that there are no other changes, and we'll vote to accept it as it is now.
We'll approve.
Thank you, and a second. Thank you, Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you. Now, we need to approve the minutes from September 9th. Maybe if anyone needing a few moments to look over those minutes.
You need a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, and a second. Thank you, Jen. All those in favor of the minutes as they are? Oh, Jen can't from, that's right. From the last meeting. So we need a second, another second?
I was late.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ration. All those in favor, please.
She came in seven forty.
Oh, oh, oh. I saw, sorry. It was like, yeah.
She's a little late.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. Now we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded to accept the minutes as they are. And all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. And that is unanimous of everybody that's present. We now move to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker, and a maximum of fifteen minutes for each subject. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. I'd like to express the deep condolences to the Richfield community for the loss of three of their finest former students. Catherine Carey Dupuy and Ryan Adams were killed in a plane crash on their way back to Colgate on Sunday. And Ryan Meagan died in a collision on Friday night near Yukon. Ryan Adams attended St. Luke's here in New Canaan, was president of our, of the, of a club called Support Our Soldiers, and received a diploma with distinction, including a STEM recognition. We mourn the loss of these young lives. And I would like to suggest that Board of Education here endorse the sending of a letter of condolence to the First Selectment and to their families. I intended to come tonight to speak on other subjects. But in light of the tremendous loss of life in such a short period of time on behalf of these, I think it's terribly inappropriate. As we are convening this meeting tonight at 7:30, there is a church service for anybody who is listening here on television, being convened at 7:30 at St. Mary's Church, and that was just announced a few minutes ago. While Boards of Education are required to meet on scheduled dates, announced months in advance, under the circumstances, I'd like to suggest that we take a minute to stand in a moment of silence, and the respect that all of us show in our community and across the world when we all suffer the loss associated with sudden death. May all those who feel a sense of emptiness present, and perhaps watching tonight live or on video recording, that the greatest lessons we impart to our children are those of emotional intelligence, which would include knowing that the communications and expression of compassion in such times of loss are among most important acts of prayerful silence, and represent an important sense of how our communities support one another to fill the voids left, when especially children leaves our lives in such a sudden loss.
Thank you, Mr. Nowacki.
May the families, friends, neighbors, and educators of these children be comforted today, and in the transition to find meaning in the loss of these lives.
Thank you, Mr. Nowacki. Are there any other people who have comments? All right, there being no other comments, we will then look to the reports and recognition. And beginning with the Saks Building Committee update, and would you like to enter to say?
Oh, sure, I would love to. While Ms. Ration is queuing up her, a couple of slides here, and you, you have a hard copy of the slides in front of you as well. The, they're also available on our website. If you're going to the homepage, if you click on the, the Saks Building Committee link, you'll see another link that says, "Presentations the Board of Education with today's date." And those, the slides that you'll be, that Ms. Ration will be showing to us tonight are accessible that way. So if you would like to watch and follow along online, you're certainly welcome to. The, as you know, the Saks Building Committee has been meeting for over a year now, working through different problems and solving, solving questions that have arisen along the way. And tonight, Penny's going to share with us a project update to give us a snapshot of some of the, of the work that was done over the summer, kind of current status on where the project is. And as you'll see, the, the focus is going to be narrowing, and we're going to be spending quite a bit of time in the next couple of weeks, talking about the Saks Building project as it goes before, comes back to the Board of Ed at our next meeting, and then the various town bodies and things. So that was a good time for a project update to the Board of Education. Penny?
So thank you all for having me back. Just for a short, I promise you, short project update. We've had a very busy and productive summer at the Saks Building Committee. So, but we're just going to hit the highlights tonight. So just to remind you of who we are, and actually, this slide is a little bit different since the last time you saw it. Joanne Keating was added as a building committee member over the summer, I believe in August, when she got sworn in. And we also went through a lengthy process for a construction manager for the project, where we did requests for qualifications, we narrowed it down, we did interviews, and we were, I'm delighted to announce that ONG Industries has been selected as the construction manager for the Saks Building Committee, and that contract has been signed and approved by the Board of Selectment. Just to remind you, in case you really had a great summer, the Saks Building Committee project has three key parts. We're renovating the fifty-eight-year-old auditorium. We are right sizing the overcrowded music rooms and adding key storage for auditorium and music instruments. And we're building an addition on the northwest corner of the Saks campus that's going to provide net twelve more classrooms to meet the needs created by enrollment increases and program changes. So I wanted to briefly review the project schedule. I think Dr. Lutzey set it up nicely. We've been working for about a year. We started off doing a feasibility study on the auditorium and music rooms. We reported on that in January of two thousand and fifteen. Also in January of two thousand and fifteen, the Board of Selectmen expanded the scope of the building committee to analyze classroom needs. So we did that classroom needs analysis from February to April. We reported on the project recommended by the building committee at that time in April. We also selected the architect, J C J Architecture. And in May, this Board of Education approved the recommended project. The, we also were, did eight separate updates and reports to the Town Council and Board of Finance, four each in April, May, June, and July, one each to each of the bodies. I think you all have seen those presentations, but the last of them, I believe, was uploaded to the Board of Ed website today, if anybody wants to see them. The Board of Finance and the Town Council approved preconstruction funds for the project of $750,000 in May, and that, we were very thankful for, as that allowed us to continue to work to move this project forward. In June, we, again, for this board, you approved the EDO forty-nine, which was the educational and specifications and project scope. So that was filed, starting the state reimbursement process. And over the summer, we've been doing the design for the project with J C J Architecture. We're working on cost estimates now. I've already mentioned that we selected ONG Industries. So that brings us up to present, today's up, status report. And then going forward, we're going to be back on October 5th. The project team will be here to present the project a little bit more fully, and we don't need your approval for state reimbursement purposes, but would ask for your endorsement of the project that we've designed to meet the educational specifications this body passed in June. We're going to go to the Board of Finance on October 6th to ask for funding approval, and to the Town Council on October 21st. Those meetings are both at 7:30 PM. At 7:00 PM at the Town Council, there will be a public hearing. In meantime, we're also working on the construction documentation for the project. We'll then get into getting local project approvals, and we will be back in December before this board with the final, if all goes well, as, as we're hopeful. We will be back with the final, what's called an EDO forty-two, which will have the final construction drawing, specifications, and cost estimates. And to, if you want, if you approve that, we will then file the EDO forty-two with the state, which will, they will then, after their review, give us permission to bid. So again, the schedule is to go out to bid between January fifteenth and March fifteenth, and to award the contracts in that time period, to do construction staging, which is very important. It helps you get all the long lead time items ready for the project, and there will be some long lead time items for this project, such as steel and windows. It would start construction in two thousand and sixteen, and we would complete construction for the start of school in September of two thousand and seventeen. So that's the project schedule in brief. So, it's a little bit of an updated site plan here. The last time we presented, we had a couple of options for the twelve, net twelve classroom addition. After lengthy review and discussion, the building committee opted with this plan. As you can see, what we've done is we've built only an extension in the northwest corner of the school. And we have then, and we'll get into the building plans later, we have then renovated the area, the auditorium, and the area around the auditorium to right-fit the music classes and the VPA needs. It's a two-story addition. It attaches on the stairwell, the northwest addition attaches at the stairwell on the southern side, and attaches through two classrooms on the northern side, taking full classrooms and making them into classrooms that are about four hundred and twenty square feet each, which will be very good for special education. The, we were able to jigger the building, so that we don't, don't expect to have to move the, the loop in front of the school, which is great. And we've added, we have a potential parking expansion, which shows there, we've, which we've put to the south end of that, that side, closer to South Avenue, so that it won't interfere with students walking to school any more than, than present. So here, we have some views to show you what it's going to look like. It really does sort of finish the facade, helps to have the same architect. There's the view from South Avenue. This is the view from Farm Road. If, when you go here, all, all of the windows and everything put in is going to comply with the new security regulations. Okay, so the, now we're looking at the plan for the two-story addition. And this is the first floor of the plan. As you can see, on the side closest to Farm Avenue, we have basically two STEM slash science rooms, and a lab to support those spaces, a maker kind of lab, or fabrication lab in between them, to respond to the needs mentioned by the staff. We have, on this floor, relocated four art rooms, which re, previously, or right now, actually, are next to the auditorium, and that was done in order to make space for the increased rooms needed for the band, choir, and the orchestra. So we've relocated them on this together, and then there's a flex classroom over on the south side. On the second floor of the addition, you get nine additional classrooms and flex space in the hallway, which is breakout space, and will be highly utilized by various groups as they're working on different kinds of projects. You see where we've located the stairway up and down, and the bathrooms. So all, if you have more questions about these in detail, the architects will be here on October 5th, but I did want to give you a preview of what we're doing. So we've now moving to the music and VPA rooms. We're going to fully renovate the auditorium. That's going to involve basically putting in all-new sound, that we're going to do an HBAC that's acoustically isolated. We're putting, we're adding, as you can see in the front, sound and light vestibules, improved acoustics and new sound system, refurbished and enhanced rigging, adding a catwalk that will have some lighting that will help with the stage, and will also be much safer and allow for much easier maintenance. We're going to redo the ceilings, walls, and floor finishes. The ceilings and the walls were, were actually taken out during the abatement work done this summer. Have taken out the seating, and it has been cleaned, and it's being held and stored right now, and will be refurbished and reinstalled. Because it was beautiful wrought iron, I guess, or steel. What's, what's the material? I think, I think it's steel, wrought iron? It's anyhow, it's much better and stronger material than the plastic seating that you could get, the cheapest plastic seating that you could get. So we had a contract approved again by the Board of Selectmen, where it's all been taken out, labeled, and stored. And we've had a couple of sample seats that the building committee was very pleased with. So we'll be able to reuse that.
It's probably cast iron.
Cast iron, thank you, sorry. Every metal but that one I picked. And then we have a new control room and video room. And all this will, we'll go into more detail with what the systems will look like on October 5th, but just wanted to let you know that that was happening. As you can see, the choral, the band, and the orchestra rooms are all nicely sized. Orchestra is moving into band. The choral is moving into where the, the area where the art rooms are being relocated from, and we're also having some stage storage there. And the band room is moving into an area that was one art room, and was the current choral room. All the rooms are going to have flat floors. They're going to have removable risers, so there's going to be extreme flexibility in how the school can use those performance and, and teacher spaces. So, to end, here's another view from the entry drive. And if you have any questions, I just wanted to let you know that that was sort of the process that we had going forward. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now. Gene?
Two questions. Construction manager, is that because we're going to have a number of contractors who effectively will be under the construction manager, or?
Yes, it'll, actually, it's, it's what's called a CM-at-risk contract. So the CM will hold all the, all the contracts with the subs. The CM will organize, will do some, some preconstruction work, will review the plans for constructability, make suggestions, help us with add alts or different ways to control the costs, deduct alts. Will help us with the system going through the state filing all the EDO forty-two forms that we need to do, and, and making sure that we maximize the reimbursement that we get from the state. So it's good to get them on board now, to help them organize the packages. And then when the packages go out to bid, they will then hold, will set at what's called a guaranteed maximum price at that time, and then they will hold the contracts.
So they will not be a contractor, though, except as a contract manager, of course, construction manager?
They'll be a construction manager at risk.
But they will not actually be doing any of the construction work? Or they could be?
No, no. I mean, there, there might be some, few provisions in the contract where they can fill in things, but no, they'll be supervising the construction, all the different trades.
Okay. A second question is, I'm having, I'm not sure that these plans are different from previous plans in some way? I'm not, not going to the detail of the risers and stuff, in terms of the actual walls and rooms, and where the rooms are, and their sizes, are these the same as we've seen before? Or are these different?
This is basically option three B, that we showed you before. Oh, amended a little bit, improved, the storage areas are improved. But what we did is, we, as a committee, we decided that it was better to have the construction in one spot. What that allowed us to do is to keep what are very good sightlines on the south end of the school. If you actually did the addition there, you're going to create, you could have managed it, wasn't that hard, but you would have created an area that could not be seen from the road. And it would have been a little bit closer when the students came out of the building before they were right on the sidewalk. So we sort of liked the way the south side of the school flows with that road right now, and that's why we opted to do all the construction at the northwest corner. So that's really the big change. You had seen that before, but you had also seen the other options, and the building committee had to, you could, the architect could only go forward with one plan. So the building committee directed the architect to go forward with that plan in mid-July.
Thank you.
Scott?
Penny, I don't have a question so much as a comment. "The wheels of progress may turn slowly, but do indeed grind fine." I think this is outstanding, that we, that we got all of the construction to one area, so we're not breaking ground in two areas. We've gone about hitting all of the sort of big overarching goals, and done it in a way that looks attractive, appears to match. I, I just, I'm thrilled, I think it looks fabulous. I think you've done an excellent job.
I will pass that on to the architect. I think they have designed a building that's closet.
Yeah, not just the architect, I mean, the whole committee, I think. Everybody that was able to get it all in, expand the classrooms, fix the auditorium, address the band shortages, move the art, you know, it's all just, it's, it's sensible.
Can I commend also?
We wanted to look like it was always there, that's our goal.
Can I commend also the leadership of this committee, because it's involved countless hours, and great diplomacy, and knowledge to make these things happen, and to make, set up everything that has to orchestrate with the state, with the committee, with the town, with the, it's a tremendous job, so just thank you, Penny.
It's, it's been a real team effort, so I appreciate, everybody on the team has been pulling in this boat really hard, all summer long.
I'd just like to add to that, you know, as we've gone through this process of other meetings, we've had someone kind of put out the slogan, "Do it once and do it right." And I think that's what the committee has been really looking towards and moving towards. We've got a fabulous committee with a lot of people showing all different perspectives, and it's been a really well researched, looking all things from, you know, design elements to make it all seem like it fits and streamlined, to, to, you know, understanding, you know, what the needs are, you know, doing the, the research work, you know? So all of this, it hasn't come from a place of, gee, we'd like to have more space for our students, because it'd be nice, but really, of looking at, these are the kids that are going to be here, we need to educate them. What are the educational spaces that we need for them, in what areas, and then how can we accommodate that, that school? So it's really been focused from what we do need to have. And it's the right time for it, because, you know, as we know, the Saks was, was built for twelve hundred, and, you know, this year, the, the enrollments at thirteen fifty-two, which is actually beyond what the demographic, we had two demographers come in and give us an estimate, and it's beyond that. So we definitely know we need the space for these kids. It's, the timing is also right in terms of, you know, bonding a, a big project. There hasn't been any school project that's been bonded for the last twenty years, so it's the right time, just like any house, you have to keep things up for maintenance. So we've got great interest rates right now. The, hiring the right people, from getting the owner's rep to the, the architect, to the construction manager, just to, again, make sure that the project is very streamlined, it's very efficient in what we're being proposed. So again, I just wanted people to understand, like, all of the work that's gone behind. I know people realize that there's a lot there with the committee's doing. But we're really looking to right-size everything, not going beyond. We've looked at other middle schools too, to see that science rooms can go huge, but what we've had, and what the architect is going in line with other rooms in the Saks Building, we're not overextending ourselves, but giving the appropriate spaces, looking to have flexibility in rooms so we can change later on, so this is not just for a short-term goal, but we're looking at down ten, fifteen years, that this is still going to be a good, viable building for everyone. So again, just with the same slogan, you know, do it once, do it right. It's an integrated plan, it's not something you can piecemeal, take apart. So I think everyone's going to look forward to seeing the more detailed designs on October 5th with the costs.
Definitely. Yes, Jen?
I just wanted to add, this looks so great. I'm so excited about it, really, I am. And it's so needed, I mean, as Sangita's saying, I know that, you know, there's so much overcrowding, and we really need the space as soon as possible. Could you just, I mean, I know, I've been talking to a lot of parents, a lot of parents are, you know, concerned about if this is actually going to go through, and I know now, now there's only one proposal versus, you know, before we had two. But this is the one that you guys are recommending, these are the, you know, I think this is what we need. Can you just talk a little bit about what, what would happen if the town, like, let's say, you know, October 6th, what if it, like, what, what will this do to the project if they ask us to go back to the drawing board, like?
Okay. Well, first of all, I wanted to say that, rising out of the feasibility study that we did on looking at the classroom needs, we came up with the recommendation, it was always twelve classrooms. We looked at various options to kind of see if we could get, how much bang we could get for a buck. But all the options that have been recommended by this board and by the Saks Building Committee have been the ones that gave us a net twelve additional classrooms. So we, we did look at a smaller option, but we didn't think that that was cost beneficial for the town. So I just wanted to say the recommendation from the, just wanted to reaffirm that the recommendation from this board and from the Saks Building Committee has not really changed since April. If the, I think that if parents are interested, they should, this would be a time to let their people know about that. If the project is not approved on October 6th and on October 21st, that will put our schedule into some question. But, you know, it depends upon what they do. If they approve it the next week, that's one thing. If they, you know, wait a longer period of time. It's a tight schedule, and we really want to get, we would very much like to get out to bid in January, so we think we can get the best bids for the work that's going to be done. And we know that there are a lot of school projects, and a lot, because rates are so good, and the economy is a little bit better, there are a lot of school projects that were done last summer, and there are a lot of school projects we hear that are in the pipeline now. So, you know, until we know what the delay is, I can't tell you what the consequences are.
Right. Somewhat we won't have to know.
But I, I think that we do appreciate the, you know, support for the project.
Right.
Yes.
I just want to add my congratulations on a job well done. It's, you know, this, this is beautiful. I mean, I, early on, when we were talking two stories in the north side of the school, I was like, okay, what's that going to look like? And it, it is beautiful, so thank you to J C J and all their hard work. I actually would like to get Mr. Macedo up, and just hear from you what this means to you, you know, for the, for the students, and, and sort of as, from the educational perspective, what this is going to do to the, to the school. Because I think it's important for the community to understand what this does for the school, from an educator's perspective.
Well, I certainly concur with the sentiment this evening, because I've been able to see firsthand the dedication, and just the yeoman's effort that Penny and Jim Beal and many others have put in on the committee, Sangita, Hazel, et cetera. And I think you're right, Scott, I think that this really is a product of a consensus of wisdom that evolved over time. And it probably is the most elegant solution, I think, that we can be looking at. As a school principal, if we could build it tomorrow, time really is of the essence. And I, I think from a very practical analysis, I shudder to think that there could be delays. So I would just encourage the community to, to see the due diligence that's been done in this project, and try to support it with, with Godspeeds, so to speak.
One, one other item I, I wanted to bring you up to date on is, questions had been raised during the multiple discussions we'd had with the town bodies about the cafeteria. So in an exercise of, kind of an abundance of, kind of caution, and to get the most information that we could for the committee and for the town, we actually have executed a contract amendment with J C J, and they are going to have a cafeteria consultant come look at it. The idea would not be to expand the cafeteria, because we have plenty of seating for people, but to figure out if there's a more efficient way to organize the delivery of food system, because that has changed a lot since nineteen ninety-seven, and the school was designed for twelve hundred students, and we now have fourteen hundred funneling through. So we'll be getting the results of that, how that folds into this project, if at all is, yet remains to be seen. But we thought it was a good time to get the information for this board and for the town bodies. So that is, I don't know the schedule, I'm act, when the consultant is going to have the report, but I will have more information on that on October 5th.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Penny, we appreciate many of the levels of what you've been involved. And, and thank you for a really well-presented presentation for us tonight, and I, we are, have new coverage. And I, we are, have new coverage tonight that we didn't realize was going to be in place, but we do have Channel 78 with us, we're working, we're doing it live. And so that for anybody that would like to watch this or tell someone else that they, who may have missed it, that it will be rebroadcast on Channel 78 on Thursday at 7:30 and Monday at 4:00. And it'll also be available on demand, online, on the New Canaan Public Schools line, so that anyone who wants to see this again. And also thanks to Dr. Lutz, we have the, what has been shown today handout, that you can go back and look at this online on the New Canaan site, and it's very helpful to be able to really expand it, and so you can read all the details. And you can also go back and see the other presentations that have been put online. That was just as of this afternoon, so thank you very much, Dr. Lutz. As our next item, next to discuss, unless anyone has anything more that they want to ask or say about Saks. Then our next item would be that the monthly financial report from Dr. Keating. And we look forward to that every month, so thank you.
Thanks. Well, you have before you tonight the first statement of accounts for FY 2016. One of the things that you'll notice that is different perhaps from prior years is that a good portion of the salary accounts have been encumbered. And that was made possible with the Munis software program that was put in place over the spring. We're in the process of reviewing and verifying all of the encumbrances. We worked with a consultant over the last few weeks to get those posted for our first payroll in September, but we do want to go through everything to ensure that all of the payroll is coded correctly. So we've been working very closely with HR and going through that process. The good news is, almost 90% of the salaries have been encumbered, so that's going to help us control and manage the budget as we move forward. You'll note that there are a few things within the salary counts that really are not designed to be encumbered, such as substitute teachers, tutoring, and those kinds of things that are not fixed salaries, curriculum writing stipends, people who are on timesheets, you're not going to see those items encumbered as we move forward. But the majority of the salary count will be encumbered, and we'll be able to monitor as we move forward. Almost 75%, I believe, of the budget, more than 75, 76% of the budget has been encumbered because we have been able to use that module within Munis. And as we move forward, we're going to look to also encumber some of the taxes that are associated with our payroll, such as FICA, Medicare, matching for employer portion, and also all of the, the funds that go into the Internal Services Fund. So that represents about 50% of the balance that isn't encumbered. So I think we're really moving in the right direction in terms of encumbering and managing our accounts.
That's terrific.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Anything that anybody wants to ask about?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to make a suggestion, when, when this is sent to the, the boards and commissions, that you add that note about the section of the salaries that won't be reflected in this, just so it's clear to everyone that the total expenditures isn't fully, it's not the full balance. I mean, since we have that big encumbered number, I think people might get confused that there's, there's a lot, there's about 10% still outstanding that, that we don't, and I just don't want anybody getting confused.
Yeah, good suggestion. I think Brian and I talked about preparing a one-page narrative to accompany this, to talk about those anomalies within that account.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, because as we, as we also continue with the transition into the in-house payroll, it's very likely there'll be some accounts, we're going to continue cleaning that up. You know, there may be some teachers that maybe they teach across two buildings that are tagged in one now, and we have to go through and be sure that their, their time is divided appropriately and things like that. So we might, you'll see some balancing to these encumbrances as we continue to refine and work through the, you know, those, those accounts and those accounting details. So we'd include that little note there as well. You know, while the, the total will remain the same, but you might see a little change in the distribution of the encumbrances based on us sort of refining and, you know, clarifying all of that.
That's terrific. Also, thank you very much for sending it on to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Town Council, and the Audit Committee. I, I think that it's very helpful to keep communication going so that everybody knows just the terrific job you're doing, you and your department, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other things or questions about that before we move on? Penny?
Well, I was just wondering, I think the Y is going forward with their project. And so I know we had, I think we had taken out the expense for the buses to get the students and the rental, to get the students to use pools at other facilities.
Right.
So can you just remind me how we're handling or dealing with that this year?
Sure, so I have a, a meeting scheduled with Craig from the Y. And we're going to talk about the details around that as far as timing goes, and phasing, and space, and things like that. And once I have those details, then the Board of Finance, when they had removed that money from our budget, said that, you know, they'll, they'll take it out of their reserve if need be, if they do go forward with the project. So once I have those details, you know, we'll go before the Board of Finance, share, share that information with them, and the proposal in order to, to have that funded. And of course, Jay Egan will be a part of that conversation all the way through. And I think Greg may, Greg Macedo may be joining me for that conversation with Craig from the Y, which is in about two weeks.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Andrew? Yes, Scott.
It's, it seems to me that the biggest part of what is not encumbered is the employee benefits. And the biggest part of that, maybe three-quarters of that, is health insurance. Is, am I reading that right?
That's correct, that's.
Why, why, if we know that, I, I know that we're self-insured, we don't know what claims are going to come in, but we do know what we have to put in per employee, right? Can we not encumber that?
We do, and we will encumber it going into next month. We plan to encumber that full amount. And we also plan to encumber the amounts that we share for the, the lab, the liability, auto and property, and the workers' comp that we share with the town. We just haven't received their billing over yet, so we'll do those two items. And that's $11 million between those two items.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, thank you for a thorough presentation for us.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's a very small point, but for other people to try and follow, we have Facilities Operations on page one. I believe you're calling it Property Services on, on numbered page, page probably, one, two, three, five, page four.
Consistency that you're asking for, sure.
Small minds go for consistency.
Careful reader, very careful reader.
I'll be going soon, don't worry.
Always appreciate it. Again, any other, anything else anybody has to mention? All right, moving on to the next item, which is an action item, and has to do with New Canaan High School. And I didn't know if you were.
No, I will be glad to start speaking of it. And if I leave anything out, or we have any questions I can't answer, I know Mr. Egan can answer for me. The first action item is a donation from the, the high school PFA. And what they'd like to do, you have in front of you the letter from the PFA, and also a packet with global at the top. What they'd like to do is donate $5,000 to the high school in order to purchase five water filling, water refilling stations slash water fountains. That would go over five existing water fountains that we have in the building. They would be purchasing the station, and then, we've been talking to Bob about doing the installation in-house, you know, using his folks, because it actually, it replaces water fountains that are currently there. So the water's there, the wasteland is there, and the power is there. And as you, as those of us that live in schools know, kids really don't use water fountains anymore. They're not drinking out of them for whatever reason, what they're doing is buying their plastic water bottles and drinking those, and then putting them in the garbage, and sometimes in the recycling bin. So what the hope would be here is that by retrofitting the existing stations to these water refilling stations and water fountains, we could encourage students to bring water bottles into school, refill them up this way with the station, and they still can use it as a water fountain. So in the packet, it gives you some information about this, sort of what it looks like and how it works. I think Mr. Egan may have brought this idea with him to us from his prior school, where he had great success with, with switching these out. And we met this morning with the PFA, PTC presidents, and the high school folks shared this with the rest of the group, and they were all very excited to go back to their, their committees as well and share the idea, and perhaps do it in some of our other buildings as well. So I think it's a great move, it's responsible, it's green, it hopefully cuts down on some of the, the recycling water, recycled bottles, and encourages students to drink water, which is all, all good things, so. The, so we ask you to approve that donation, and then we will go ahead and get these ordered and work with Bob and try to get these in place in the next couple of months, if not sooner.
Mr. Egan, did you want to add anything, or? Covers everything, okay, terrific.
You do see them all over the college campuses, there's, the sustainability aspect of it, I think, is, is an important one for us to call out. I think it's important for us to pay attention to and to pursue every chance we get.
Any other comments coming in? Yes, Deanna?
I just wanted to thank you, because I have, have two high schoolers currently who came home within the first few weeks when you were polling students all excited about this option. So I think you've really excited the kids even about it. And as a parent, I love the hygienic and the sustainability aspects of it, so thank you. I think it's a wonderful idea. And again, thank you to the PFA for providing the funding for this, yet another example of our parents being generous and, you know, picking up the slack where, you know, for, for the taxpayer, so, thank you.
Very appreciated, very appreciated from the, everyone who initiated it and then having it come into the schools. Is there a motion that someone would like to put this on? Jen?
Motion to approve accepting the donation from the PFA for the water fountains.
Thank you, is there a second? Sangita, a second of that motion? All those in favor signify by raising your hands? And that's unanimous with everyone here, thank you. Thank you very much again to the parents and to the school for bringing this up and bringing this to, to us. Moving now to the second, the Saks PTC donation.
Yes, and that is the reason we amended the agenda, thank you for doing that. We, Friday afternoon, we were, received a check and asked to deposit the, in the amount of $26,949.26 from the Saks PTC in order to purchase the, a couple, two laptop carts and laptops that would go into them. This is something that we've been talking about for a while with the Saks PTC. They work closely with Scott Barnett and our technology team in deciding what the needs are. Dr. Krentz is very involved with that as well. And this will help us, as you know, we had to close two computer labs over at Saks in order to pick up the classrooms, excuse me, with the world language lab and a computer lab, in order to pick up the classroom space for the new seventh grade rooms that we have, the homerooms. So this will help us with those classes so that we have the mobile technology in order to, to meet the needs and to keep, keep things running the way that we'd like them to go. The, it winds up being 30 laptops and two carts. They'll be available for, you know, for students to use, sign out. And again, Scott Barnett and his team's very well aware of it, so they are ready to support it and, and get things going. So another very generous donation to our students on behalf of our parents and PTC.
It's very appreciated, and again, thanking the parents, that this is such a generous gift, and a lot of work goes into earning this money. It's not just something that happens to fall out of, out of space. They do a lot of work to have this happen. Does anyone want to form that motion? Deanna?
I move to approve the donation in the amount of $26,949.26 made by the PTA of Saks Middle School for the purchase of laptops and charge carts.
Thank you, is there a second? Penny ration, thank you. All those that are in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous again, we're thankful for that very nice gift. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have a lister of consent agenda items, and is there any motion about those? Thank you, Jen, is there a second on that? Mrs. Ration, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is accepted. Announcements at future meetings, Dr. Lutz.
Sure. Well, the, a sign that the school year is truly underway is when Spirit Week starts. So Spirit Week began today up at the high school with High Society Day. And I heard from a few parents that they got quite a kick out of their children's interpretation of High Society Day. I'm sure Mr. Egan got quite a kick out of it as well. The, tonight, there's students downstairs in the cafeteria working on their banners, because they will be hanging the banners tomorrow and, as a sign of class pride, as they come back for Costume Day. And the, as you know, that's where they dress up in costumes, and sometimes do it in costumes that they have in common. We don't have school on Wednesday this week, and so then Thursday, when they return, it's Turn Back the Clock Day. Seniors will be the eighties, all the way back to the eighties. Juniors, the seventies, sophomores, the sixties, and freshmen, the fifties. And then on Friday, it is Red and Black Day, as we have done, we've done every year, where students will be dressed in red and black. In the cafeteria that morning on Friday, it is quite a sight, as you look across and you see hundreds of students all wearing their, wearing their black, black and red. We do have our pep rally this year. The pep rally will be at 10:18 on Friday morning, and will run for about an hour. We have our bonfire Friday night, and we have the homecoming dance on Saturday night at 7:00. And of course, we have our football game in the afternoon on Saturday. So the, it was a jam-packed Spirit Week here. But I do want to just mention and commend the efforts of Mr. Egan's, plural, both Jay and Bill, in communicating with our parents and our students about proper expectations during our Spirit Week. They, Mr. Egan, the principal, sent out a letter to parents and to students talking about those expectations and how Spirit Week is meant to bring the school together, bring the students together, unify, show, show everyone's spirit, and to make it a positive experience for everybody. The, the feedback I've received from that has been very positive. And at the same time, Mr. Egan, our athletic director, has been meeting with each of the teams, talking with them about the student's code of conduct and responsibilities, and really reaffirming our student-athlete's commitment to upholding those responsibilities, to proper behavior, good, responsible decision-making. And has had them sign off on their commitment to do so, to follow through on making good choices throughout this week. So we're very excited about it. I think that, you know, it's a very positive sign. The students have responded very well to these communications and the conversations that have occurred, because we, while, everyone, they do want this to be a positive experience for everyone. So it's an exciting week at the school. It's a chance for students to have some fun, loosen up a little bit, but still do it in an educational environment that's appropriate and respectful for everybody. So I want to commend both Bill and Jay Egan for all of the work that they've been doing in order to set that tone and do it in the right way for all of the kids. So, thank you. Sorry, that was a little bit of a long announcement, but I just wanted to say that.
A lot of, a lot of good things happening.
It's just exciting, you know, there's a lot going on. The, other things happening, the Friday, Saks is also having an eighth grade pep rally, where they talk a bit about, but some of the things going on over there at Saks, which is exciting. Of course, we have all of our open houses going on now, we've been, we're sort of in the middle of the swing of that, and that, those calendars are all available on our website. The, at our next meeting on the 5th, as we heard from Penny, we'll be talking in greater depth and detail about the Saks project and looking for any more feedback from the board and a, an endorsement from the board on that final project. It has gone through some iterations, as you know, and I, I also agree, it's absolutely very well-designed, very thoughtfully done, very complete in all of the deliberations and the thinking and all of that. And so it's, to have the design professionals here as well on the 5th will be a nice opportunity to kind of piece all of that together, so thank you for that. And then it's likely we're going to begin our conversations about calendar, because we've learned that we need some time to do that. And talking about our regional calendar, and we'll be, I guess we'll be doing the calendar for 1718 at that point. Yeah, seems like a long way away, but it'll be here soon. So lots going on. We also are, excuse me, so you know, the second meeting in October, we are preparing our assessment report. I know that in sort of dribs and drabs, there's been information coming out about SAT and smarter balanced, and CMT and CAPT, and those things. And, you know, in the, in the past, we received that information all, all the same time. You know, we would get the CAPT and the CMT essentially in August, and we'd have our SAT and our AP, and we'd be able to roll all of that together. But we're still, we're sort of receiving it in, in pieces and... But we're still sort of receiving it in pieces and our access has been a little off. So we're going to be doing that presentation, the second meeting in October. And Dr. Carenti's begun working just even today with our curriculum leaders, talking to them about what that may look like. And we'll be going through our SAT and our AP and the Smarter Balanced and also be able to talk a little bit about what's happening in the future. As you know, the change with the juniors from the Smarter Balanced into the SAT and the PSAT being offered during the school year this year. There are quite a few changes as far as statewide standardized testing goes. So we thought, we, instead of giving it to you the way we're getting it, which has been pieces and dribs and drabs, we'd like to do it together in a comprehensive way. So on October 21st, we'll go through, I think that's the date, we'll go through, it may not be.
I think it's the 19th.
19th, the second meeting in October. Thank you. We'll go through the, all of those different assessment pieces. And it may wind up being a two-parter even because of, there's so much to talk about with this. But we're preparing that. So, you know, people, they'll keep reporting out on how well we did on this or how well we did on that. But we'll, that whole package will be together, the second meeting in October.
Terrific. Sounds very interesting. Looking now at our agenda, we have comments from the public, which would be, again, to ensure the right, public's right to be heard. Anyone can speak for two minutes, a lot to each speaker, a maximum of 15 minutes on a subject. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? There being no one. We will then adjourn to executive session. The subjects to be discussed are, one, pending claims and litigation in accordance with CGS 1200 parentheses 8. And number two, negotiations with respect to collective bargaining in accordance with GC, CGS 121B9.
I've been sitting here thinking since the beginning of the meeting when Mr. Noackey suggested that we have a moment of silence in honor of the kids from Ridgefield that lost their lives. And I think that's a pretty good idea and a pretty good way to end this part of our meeting if you think that's appropriate.
I'll ask the board. Is there, is there a motion that we'd like to do that?
Shall we move to the other?
I think we can do it.
Just, okay, if everybody, is everybody in agreement? I'll look for some shaking hands. Is there anyone who, is anyone who does not want to participate? Okay. I think probably we're in the midst of the motion. So maybe what we might want to do is do the vote. We have a motion on the floor. And so is there, we have now someone to move it and then to second.
I don't think we need a motion. I think we just, take a moment and
Oh, I was, okay.
Reflect on the horrible loss that's, that's occurred in one of our, you know, very near sister towns.
Our hearts and our thoughts go to the memories of these youngsters and to the families. We have a final motion to have a motion from, you were just saying, Deanna?
I move to adjourn to executive session.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor? We'll then move to that. Thank you.